Let's call the meeting of July 17th City Council Meeting to order. We'll have the roll call, please. A pledge of the... Oh, let's do the Pledge of Legends first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Yes. And I just want to, for the record, notify the council and the public that Councilmember Fruein and Councilmember Wong will be participating remotely tonight. And I will request a roll call vote for all voting items. Councilmember Fruein?
Here.
Councilmember Mohan?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Here.
Mayor Chow?
Here. Okay, do I have any closed session report?
We do, Mayor. Tonight, I will report out on a closed session that just closed where the council voted unanimously to appoint Tina Kapoor as interim city manager. And then I'd also like to report out on two closed sessions, one from June 3rd and one from June 6th. This is the first public meeting since those two closed sessions. On June 3rd, the City Council held a closed session where they voted to approve a draft separation severance and general release agreement with city manager Wu, who had been put on administrative leave since May 2nd. Mayor Chow and councilmembers Wong, Mohan, and Fruein voted in favor. Vice Mayor Moore voted against. On June 6th, the City Council held another closed session to consider the same agreement, this time signed by city manager Wu with minor changes. Mayor Chow and councilmember Wong and councilmember Mohan voted in favor. Councilmember Fruein was absent. He was traveling internationally, as he is tonight. And Vice Mayor Moore voted against. At that time, the separation severance and general release agreement became final. The salient provisions of the voluntary agreement are: Former city manager will receive eight months of her 12-month severance, as well as a payout of unused vacation and administrative leave totaling $311,089.53, as well as eight months of COBRA. Former city manager Wu agreed to waive her right to bring suit against the city for any known or unknown claims, and the city also agreed to waive their right to sue the mayor, to the former city manager. Ms. Wu, on the one hand, and elected city officials, and the appointed city manager and city attorney, on the other, agreed to refrain from making any slanderous, libelous, or disparaging statements about the other. Both parties were represented by legal counsel. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. Then we have three ceremonial items. The first is a proclamation recognizing Friends of Cupertino Library. I believe we have a speech or presentation. Do we have representative from the organization? Would you like to say a few words?
Mayor Bob McKibben is here.
Uh huh. You can, you don't need to fill our speaker card. You just, you can just speak from the microphone. Yeah, would you like to say a few words, or we can, I can read from the proclamation?
Mayor, Mayor and City Council members, on behalf of the 50-odd members of the Friends of the Cupertino Library, I'm very pleased and very proud to accept your proclamation recognizing over 50 years of community service by our organization to the, to the library. We support quite a few programs. Over the course of those 50 years, we've donated well over a million dollars through kids, childrens, teens, and adult programs at the library. We're fortunate to be staffed by a group of people that are very dedicated to giving back to the community and appreciate living here. And so on behalf of the 50-odd members, again, I'd like to say thank you very much. We appreciate the recognition. We appreciate your support, particularly with our three big used book sales. And we certainly appreciate the support of the staff of the library who are cooperative and supportive totally. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the Friends of Cupertino Library for your years of consistent service to the community. I think we have all donated books or purchased books from this very community hall, and I still have some of those books at home. So thank you for all your volunteer throughout the years and supporting many programs. So I think we can have a photo. Would you like to all come upstage? All of you, come up. There's steps that way. So, yeah, stay here. So, yeah, and I think we should distribute evenly. Okay. So, would you like to? Would you like to stand in the middle? Yeah, okay. So here is the proclamation. Oh.
We're all new to this.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Ready? Yeah. So the proclamation is in the agenda packet, and there are more details about all the contribution that they've made over the years. Thank you. Yeah, thank you for all your work. Thank you for your service. Yeah, thank you. Next, we are recognizing with the proclamation to the Cupertino D'Anza Optimist Club. They have been providing free breakfast for July 4th and then many other activities and supporting many clubs, and, yeah.
Mayor Dennis Whitaker is present to receive the proclamation on behalf of the D'Anza, Cupertino D'Anza Optimist Club.
Mayor, City Council members and staff, thank you for letting us come. The primary focus of the Optimists International is the better men of youth. The D'Anza Optimist Club was formed in 1979. Due to lack of members in the other clubs, the D'Anza Club allowed other local clubs to merge into their club. The Cupertino Club, the Saratoga Club, the Las Gatas Club, the Santa Clara Club, and the Miracle Mile Club, which is also known as West San Jose. We meet regularly at 7:15 at Holder's Restaurant on Wolf Road every Wednesday. We invite you to come. Our typical calendar of events commences late in December and goes on through January and February with the Oratorical and Essay Contest for local school students. Springtime finds us at the Cherry Blossom Festival trying to raise money. In May, our annual Respectful Law Week, we, we use this to honor a sheriff from the West Valley Substation, a member of the Central Fire District, and an EMT individual. In June, we try to send elementary students from across the county to participate in an O V Y, Optimists Volunteers for Youth Campsite near La Honda for a wonderful week's experience. Late in the summer, we cook for the annual Fourth of July Pancake Breakfast at Memorial Park and Quinlan Center. In September, we, we participate in the annual Rotary Fall Festival, providing bike safety programs for young bikers. In November, we put on a large annual event known as Youth Appreciation, where we acknowledge middle and high school students from around Santa Clara County who give back to their community. In December, we also have taken low-income elementary students on a Christmas shopping spree at a large retailer. Also in December, we cook for the annual Breakfast with Santa at the Quinlan Center. Over and above this, we provide cleaning for the pond at Bub and McClellan. We also provide a monthly dinner at the JW House for Kaiser Hospital at Homestead. And finally, we support local high schools with the octagon clubs. We need additional members. And if, real quickly, I'll try to read our creed because it's very important. Promise yourself to be so strong that nothing could disturb your peace of mind, to talk health, happiness, and prosperity to every person you meet, to make all your friends feel that there is something in them, to look at the sunny side of everything and make your optimism come true, to think only of the best, to work only of the best, to expect only of the best, to be just as enthusiastic about the success of others as you are about your own, to forget the mistakes of the past and press on to greater achievements of the future, to wear cheerful cantenance at all times and give every living creature you meet a smile, to give so much time to the improvement of yourself that you have no time to criticize others, and to be too large for worry, too noble for anger, too strong for fear, and too happy to permit the presence of trouble. And I made it. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you. I only know a snippet of what you do, and then you are busy all year round. So thank you, and I welcome more members to join you. So let's take a photo. So, any Optimist Club members join us? Yeah, okay. Come this way. This way. So it's amazing, yes, so much you do.
Good to see you.
So, this, so for this year, on the second meeting of each month, I'm recognizing some less, some, a lot of organizations that have been contributing to the community consistently. You are welcome to suggest any clubs to recognize. And the next one is a recognition for Kennedy Middle School Science Olympiad Team, who won the second place in 2025. But I have learned that they have been getting first or the second place since 2019. So, amazing.
Absolutely, and it's not my fault, because this is only my second year with Kennedy Middle School. I'm Dr. Dewis. I'm, I'm proud to be the principal at Kennedy Middle School, and I'm here this evening representing our school. Mayor Chow and City Council, thank you so much for inviting us and for this wonderful recognition. It's truly an honor to stand before you today, representing Kennedy Middle School. We are incredibly proud of our young science Olympiad team and the outstanding achievement of a hard-fought second place in the National Science Olympiad Competition this year. You know, last year, as you mentioned, we celebrated a first-place win, which was, of course, very exhilarating. But I have to tell you that this year's second-place achievement feels even more, in many ways, significant. It was a tougher climb and a more challenging journey for these students for many reasons. Our students faced an unprecedented level of competition. The national landscape for science Olympiad has grown tremendously, with more and better teams than ever before, pushing the boundaries of scientific knowledge, inquiry, and ingenuity. We also encountered unexpected hurdles, including a change in key personnel. Our students and families worked hard to surmount these challenges, coming together to encourage and coach one another to this outstanding victory. These challenges went beyond the mere academic. They were tests of resilience, adaptability, and teamwork, you guys. They really were. Yet through it all, our students rose to the occasion. They demonstrated incredible dedication, spending countless hours after school and on weekends on their personal time researching, building, and problem-solving. They supported and collaborated with one another, learned from setbacks, and pushed each other and themselves to achieve excellence even when the path was steep. The second-place trophy is a testament not only to their scientific prowess, but also to their incredible spirit. It's a symbol of their ability to overcome adversity and to achieve greatness even when odds are stacked against you. Of course, our families have always played a critical role in our science Olympiad achievements, but this year, the entire Kennedy Science Olympiad community came together to support our young scientists, and it was truly inspiring to be part of this team. I appreciate you all, including me. So on behalf of the entire Kennedy Science Middle School community, our dedicated supportive parents, and especially our brilliant, brilliant students, thank you, Mayor Chow. Thank you, City Council, for recognizing these extraordinary efforts. Your acknowledgement means the world to us and further inspires our young scientists to continue reaching for the stars. We couldn't be more proud to bring this honor back to Cupertino. So thank you.
Thank you.
I also have here a card signed by all of our Olympiads for the City Council.
Well, thank you for the parents and the volunteers and the coaches. I know it's a lot of work to get them to the places that you are, and consistently every year. Tremendous. So let's take a photo. And the video team, I know that we have two council members on remote, so it's possible to edit in those council members in the, our photos tonight. That would be great. Thank you.
Just everyone take one. You can sort out names later. So just in the center, try to distribute evenly. One side, one side.
Hide behind the students. That's my, that's my challenge.
I don't think we have post-pument or any proposal to reorder the items. Then next, we have oral communication. City Clerk, could you read the instructions?
Yes, Mayor. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council and not on the agenda for discussion. The total time for oral communications will ordinarily be limited to one hour. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes. As necessary, the chair may further limit the time allowed to individual speakers or reschedule remaining comments to the end of the meeting on a first-come, first-her basis, with priority given to students. In most cases, state law will prohibit the council from discussing or making any decisions with respect to a matter not listed on the agenda. A council member may, however, briefly respond to statements or, statements made or questions posed by speakers. A council member may also ask a question for clarification, provide reference for factual information, request staff to report back concerning a matter, or request that an item be added to a future city council agenda in response to public comment. Anyone requesting that would like to speak on this item, please have your request to speak submitted in the next nine minutes. Mayor, we have, I see nine, I have nine requests to speak in Community Hall. I see one hand raised virtually. So that would bring the total to 30 minutes, approximately.
Then I guess we can have three minutes each.
Okay. First, we have Stanley Young, followed by Rodney Weathers, followed by Rota Frye. Welcome, Stanley.
Just gonna test the mic here. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Stanley Young. I work for IFPTE Local 21. We represent the city employees here, as you can see in our blue shirts. This city of Cupertino has a high demand from council, has a high demand on city staff, and I want the community, I want the community to know that these employees have gone above and beyond, a lot of people do, for, on behalf of the city and the residents. We're asking that the council invest in the greatest resource of the city, and that's the city employees. Cupertino's streets, parks, trees are some of the most beautiful in the entire Bay Area, and our members have sacrificed and done a lot in a time when we did not get the raises in the past because of the tax issue with Apple. So we want you to know that we're, we're getting closer, I think, in negotiations, but right now, it's not enough to move the needle to close the deal. So we're asking that council ask city staff to have a closed-session agenda item with labor negotiations with IFPTE Local 21 and CEA. We want to do what's fair, we want to do what's right, and we want council and staff to reward these amazing employees. My father was a public employee. I'm lucky and blessed to do what I do. There's many things going on in this country right now, and we could look at internationally, locally, and at the state level, but we can control things locally and do right by the working people who can't even afford to live in the city that they work for. So please invest in your city employees so that we can get a fair contract on behalf of the members who serve the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Stanley. Next, we have Rodney Weathers, followed by Rota Frye, followed by William Jang. Welcome, Rodney.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, I think some of you have seen me out on inspections before, and I'm the Senior Building Inspector with the City of Cupertino. I represent the building side of things, that we are here to help keep everyone safe and in their structures and provide life safety services. And we have been here throughout the tough times. And we just ask that you bargain in good faith, knowing that we all stuck around for the second round, and that we've all, you know, had to do multiple jobs. I was working basically two jobs at, at the time when everything got tough, and they eliminated positions and held positions. And so we just ask that you now bring us back up to where we should be, and that's equal with our neighboring cities. And also, we looked, we had a salary study that was done, but we don't really agree with all the salary study, because some of the positions, including my own, was, was left out. And my position alone is significantly less than neighboring jurisdictions. And we have numerous staff members that that has occurred, but their, their positions are being, weren't taken into account. So we just ask that you maybe relook at this and make an investment in the people that really have made an investment in Cupertino. Thank you.
Thank you, Rodney. Next, we have Rota Frye, followed by William Jang, followed by Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Rota.
Hi, good evening. This is gonna come as, I assure you, a complete non-secretary, although it's not gonna sound like it, gonna be talking about the budget, zoning, and of course, the terrorist apartments. With respect to the, the budget, I wrote to you guys earlier, it just seems to me that our income production, projections are a bit too optimistic. The projected TOT, which is the transient occupancy tax, which goes on Airbnb's and also, of course, our hotels, I felt that it was really too ambitious. Our hotels have been struggling, and the numbers were, you know, getting close to, well, where they were pre-COVID. And, you know, the hotels haven't, haven't come back, and, and I think I'd like to be a little more conservative on our income from the, from the hotel tax. The next piece is also the sales tax revenue. I also felt that we were too optimistic when it came to the sales tax revenue. I've read that the, as, as many of you know, Cupertino has a similar relationship with Insight as it did with Apple, and it appears that that, that relationship is ending. And my guess is that we're getting about right around, historically, maybe around a million a year, so we're looking at a good 10% or so of our sales tax revenue. So again, I thought our sales tax revenue, too optimistic, so please, if you could take another look at it, because it's gonna make a difference. With respect to zoning, there are two, two bills, state bills right now, AB 7, SB 79 and AB 648. Please take a look, look them up and fight, fight, fight. Now, with respect to the terrorist apartments, you know I've talked to you about this before. I don't think anybody is in favor of evicting our neighbors. Please do what you can to discourage or block the sale of this from the terrorist apartments, of the terrorist apartments of the college district. And if AB 648 goes through, and maybe even it doesn't, they'll be able to build giant dorms, dorm towers there, that would be looming over our single-family homes. But there's more. We're also miss out on about a million dollars of property tax annually. And, you know, the, the district could have and should have built on campus, three other Bay Area college districts are, and they're doing it with state funding, while the district is using our bond money that could have been used to benefit student education. Now, you know, the, the district has, has led us to believe that, you know, it's okay, that students will be fine, and, and that the relocation would be fine. But the students are gonna lose their walk, walk to school, and fact of the matter is, I called the school district, called F U H S D and C U S S D, and they didn't say that they were gonna do anything over and beyond what they would normally do for any other student who's in the district, although there is a letter from the district that kind of implies otherwise, and I will send that to you. With respect to relocation, they're looking at 10%, 20% more rent in Cupertino if they can afford to stay. Thank you.
Thank you, Rota. Next, we have William Jang, followed by Jennifer Griffin, followed by Vivek Sagdeen. Welcome, William.
Okay. Dear Mayor Chow and City Council, we live near Wilson Park. We urgently request that the city address a dangerous condition at the park's baseball slash softball field. The field poses significant hazard to our family, neighboring residents, and the Club Buses Creek Bike Pass users. School kids of all ages walk or bike on the pass, and they're susceptible to being hit by flying speedy baseballs or softballs. This critical safety issue requires immediate attention. On May 28th, 2025, a softball struck our master bedroom window with such a force that it shattered multiple layers of glasses, bent the metal window guards, and scattered debris throughout the entire master bedroom, posing a serious risk to our family, including our toddler grandson. The errant ball missed my wife, Leslie, only by two feet. I can still remember her panicked voice after it happened. I cannot imagine the consequences if she got hit by the speedy, hard ball. I have the ball here. Went through the entire, it embedded in the window because of the window guards. This ball is presented here and many other baseballs in that bucket, with a dozen balls we collected in our backyard every once in a while. Just over the past five months, our property has been struck 12 times by baseballs over the last 30 years. We have replaced our master bedroom windows twice, and the family room sliding door once. Such recurring incidents have Such recurring incidents have rendered our backyard unsafe. We wanna say enough is enough. Broadly, the Wilson Park's ballpark endangers the public using the Club Basses Creek Bike Pass. High-speed baseballs and softballs can easily strike unsuspecting cyclists, pedestrians, and joggers. Sheriff Deers, who investigated the main 28s incident, emphasized the need for us to urge the city to take quick measures to safeguard everybody's safety. Therefore, we respectively request that the city, one, tough, close the Wilson Park baseball field, period, since the Wilson Park is a very small park nestled in tightly needed neighborhood. Or else install high netting fences or other physical barriers between Wilson Park and the Club Basses Creek Bike Pass and the adjacent properties. I guess my time's out. I would like to have-
Thank you, that is your time.
Okay.
Thank you. Next, we have Jennifer Griffin, followed by Vivek Sagdeen, followed by Rajiv Chamraj. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin. I wanted to talk tonight about some, essentially, Senate bills that are coming up, and also to request a steady session by the city. We have a lot of new SB 330 projects that are coming up. A lot of them are housing. Many of them are spread out across the length of Stevens Creek Boulevard, from the west side of the city down to the east side. We have one that is at the Staples Project, which we heard Planning Commission recently. It is a housing project. I think it was worked on very diligently, but I'm very, very disappointed because there is no retail involved. That site alone is losing 40,000 square feet of retail along the historic shopping corridor of Stevens Creek Boulevard. My grandmother lived in Cupertino from 1950 to 1980, when she relocated to Oregon for my aunt to take care of her, and I'm used to coming into Cupertino as a child to shop along that corridor. That area now is potentially going to lose a lot of its retail. It is accessible. There are a string of other SB 330s that are planned for other shopping centers down the length of Stevens Creek Boulevard, and I, I'm going to say right now that SB 330 was started by Senator Nancy Skinner as the housing crisis. I'm calling it the retail crisis bill because we're losing retail. We, the bill was not well thought out, no one, no one asked the public about it when it was signed by the governor several years ago, but we're living the reality of it. We're going to lose retail. And therefore, I would like to have the city study the loss of retail from SB 330 and the implications for the city. We're going to lose grocery stores, we're going to lose drugstore access, potentially all sorts of things. The other, and I'm very, very concerned about if SB 79 is enacted, what that will do. This is the one that will have high rises one half mile down any major bus line, which is Stevens Creek Boulevard. You're gonna have seven-story buildings, no retail. The other one is that SB 330 is not subject to CEQA. No environmental studies, there will be no traffic studies done. If we have five of these piled up on Stevens Creek Boulevard with no traffic studies, we're gonna be traffic crisis. Bedlam, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Vivek Sagdeen, followed by Rajiv Chamraj, followed by Nupur Hirmath. Welcome, Vivek.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, Councilmember Mohan, and the members on the net. First of all, I want to thank you for helping us on the Schofield Project. So, I'm Vivek Sagdeen, I'm the block leader for the Schofield and the Faria Block. And now, we have another project that is adjacent to our street, and that is the SB 330 59 Townhouse Project at 20840 Stevens Creek Boulevard, and that will replace Staples, Pizza Hut, and few other retailers. I live right behind Staples at 20821 Schofield Drive, so this project is going to affect me and the neighbors in terms of having these four-story townhouses right behind us. We have moved here for the suburban life, and now we are going to be in like a city life. So, firstly, we heard about this project last week when there was the Planning Commission meeting, and we were not informed of this over the last year when this project was taking shape. So, we did mention this in the Planning Commission meeting, that there should have been some feedback and public hearing from the people affected by this in the city. They heard us, and they recognized that there wasn't enough done to reach out to us, and but they, despite that, they just went ahead and approved that project in the Planning Commission. Now, it is coming to the City Council, so we know that in SB 330, five public hearings are allowed, and you all know how many hearings and discussions we had on the Schofield Project. So, I request the council to at least give us a chance to have a hearing or two and discuss this before approving this project. The other issue, I mean, we of course have privacy and noise issues. The builder has said that he's gonna keep the 10-foot wall that exists right now between Steven, that backside and the houses we have on Schofield, and he's gonna plant trees to give us the privacy, but the trees are going to take many years to grow. So, I'm requesting that a temporary wall can be built on top of the existing wall to give us the privacy. And the other aspect of that is, you know, like, city has done very well with the Schofield Project, and we really appreciated the feedback, so let us do the same for this project as well. Yeah, I mean, it was surprising that we have been meeting people like Luke Connolly of Planning-
Thank you, that is your time.
Meeting. Okay. I just want to say that-
Thank you, that is, yes, your time. Next, we have Rajiv Chamraj, followed by Nupur Hirmath, followed by Alex Corbalis. Welcome, Rajiv.
Good evening, everyone, and this is Rajiv Chamraj. I live about two doors from Vivek. I'm here to talk about the two projects, 20840 Stevens Creek, as well as 207, 20739 Schofield Drive. On the Stevens Creek Project, right, I am not opposed to the project per se. The way that it was, the whole thing was run, it's very shameful, right? They said that there was a meeting on June 24th, none of us knew, even the block leader didn't know, right? You know, that's, it can't be done without any public input or anything, right? They said somebody gave us the, gave them the idea to plant some trees. As Vivek said, it will take 20 years. All our bedrooms are facing, are not facing, it will affect the noise and other things. So, and then, I've been in this profession for a long time, and this is the first time I ever seen a road being, being part of the setback, right? So, even though the law calls for 59 feet, and then the developer has given only 37 feet, we can live with that, but he has included the 20-feet road into that. Actual setback is only five feet from my, from our property line to his, to the road, right? We don't want that to happen. So, we brought up these issues with the Planning Commission last, last week, but I don't think they've heard, they heard it. So, we want, I'll be sending a letter to the City Council as well as to the Planning Commission. We need a proper resolution for all these things. And the second thing is, I echo what Vivek said about the Schofield Project. The city did help us, the city did come through, we are, we are really glad the city is with the residents. I heard that it's in the court. I did send a note to the city attorney, you know, how, even if the city approves the property, especially that stretch of the street is under private covenant, it's not a discriminatory covenant. So, even the city approves, I don't think the, the residents have the right to stop that project. So, I would honestly request, honestly request the city to fight the Schofield developer, and then ask the developer on Stevens Creek to work with us. As I said, you know, I'm not opposed to the project, I just want certain things to be taken care of so that we can all live peacefully. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Nupur Hirmath, followed by Alex Corbalis, followed by Jean Bedord. Welcome, Nupur.
Good evening, Council. My name is Nupur Hirmath. I'm a manager of decarbonization programs at Silicon Valley Clean Energy. Silicon Valley Clean Energy, or SVCE, is your community's provider of electricity. We buy clean power that PG&E delivers to over 96% of your community's residents and businesses. Since our inception in 2016, we have invested nearly $4 billion in new renewable energy and energy storage projects. We have a tremendous board of directors, and we are very thankful for the leadership shown by Councilmembers Frun and Mohan as a part of our board. I'm here tonight to share some information on the actual impact of the City of Cupertino's participation in Silicon Valley Clean Energy during calendar year 2024. In the past year, customer bills in Cupertino were $1.2 million lower due to our membership in SVCE. That's 1.2 million that local residents had to spend on other priorities and investments. SVCE's efforts have led to reducing greenhouse gas emissions from transportation and energy by 27% across the county. In addition, we have provided $141 million in on-bill savings to customers during SVCE's lifetime. I have a handout outlining Cupertino's Community Impact Report, and I'll leave some copies here for council and the members of the public. Despite our savings, we know that many people struggle to pay their energy bills. Aside from our standard discount to customers, we offer additional discounts to lower-income customers to reduce our bills by 20%. SVCE also continually invests in the local community. We provide about $8,000 in rebates for customers who are making electric upgrades to their homes. In two dates, Cupertino residents have claimed $436,000 of those rebates for electric home upgrades. In addition, the City of Cupertino has obtained $350,000 in grants from SVCE to decarbonize your community, including the off-grid EV chargers that are seen in the library parking lot by the field. You can learn more at svcleanenergy.org. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Next, we have Alex Corbalis, followed by Jean Bedord. Welcome, Alex.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Alex Corbalis. I am a Recreation Coordinator here with the City of Cupertino, and yesterday was my 11th anniversary of full-time work here. I'm going to keep my comments brief out of respect for everyone's time, but I will also echo a lot of the points that you heard Stanley and Rodney make earlier. Employees really pulled together during the last couple of years of uncertainty we've had here. It's a common refrain to hear that sometimes you just need to do more with less, and we have done more with a lot less in some cases. Our residents demand the best from our city, and therefore, from the employees that work here, and I'm personally, I'm proud to work for a city that allows us to rise to that demand. I am proud to rise to that demand, and I'm also proud to work with so many people who are willing to rise to that demand and were willing to hang tight during the rough times that we've had recently. And while that demand is put on us, the request we make of you is that you see this and the participation we have here today as a reflection of the need we have to restore our place in the Bay Area and in the South Bay. We are not a mediocre city, and we're not mediocre employees, and so we need to, in many cases, for a number of our classifications, move out of those bottom tiers of comparisons when you compare our salaries and our compensations to other cities. And that's all I have for you tonight, so please consider that the next time it comes up, when you consider our next proposal.
Thank you, Alex. Next, we have Jean Bedord.
I realize that what I understand is on the consent count.
Okay, so you are withdrawing your request to speak for oral communications.
But I still want it on the consent count.
Understood, thank you. And so, now we will move to those members of the public requesting to speak virtually. We have Peggy Griffin, followed by San Ar. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, could you please show the first slide, please?
Oh, there we go.
Ah, thank you. This is a map of the area. The orange part is Deansa College, the purple part is the perimeter a half-mile away from Deansa College. And me, like many of you, don't pay attention to upcoming bills and all that, but you need to start because there are a lot of bills that will impact you, and it's easier to stop them before they get enacted. AB 440, 648 has to do with community college housing, and it overrides local zoning within a half-mile of campus. That means, for example, the McClellan Road housing. If Deansa College owns that property, they can build whatever they want. They don't have to follow setback, they don't have to follow height restrictions, they don't have to follow anything. Now, when you look at this purple map, on the right is Deansa Boulevard, on the bottom is the area near Jollyman Park, on the left is Kennedy Middle School and Lincoln Elementary School, and that, and the top is around Greenlee, just south of Homestead Road, south of, yeah, Homestead Road, near, if you draw a line from Greenlee. So, that's the area, so all of Schofield is basically impacted. The Jollyman Park area, the people around Lincoln and Kennedy are impacted, and the Garden Gate area, you are impacted. If Deansa College decides to buy any property within this area, they can build whatever they want if this passes. Next slide, please. Okay, so where the, where it stands is right now, for a bill to pass, you have to have the Assembly pass it, which they have, and 63 people voted yes, and 16 people voted no or otherwise. So, where it's now is at the Senate, the California Senate, and then the governor would vote on it. You need to call both the office in Sacramento and the District Office of Senator Josh Becker, that's your representative, call him now, because tomorrow they're having an Education Center meeting, and I don't know when they're gonna vote on this. You need to call now, you need to tell your friends who live in other districts, call now. You oppose AB 648.
That is your time, Peggy. Thank you. And our final request to speak is San Ar. Let's see. Welcome, Sam.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and Councilmembers. Tonight, I wish to express my support for our city employees that are in attendance. Our city employees deserve the best that our city can afford. Our community-facing city employees in particular, public works, OX and RECC, planning, building, engineering, they serve a critical function for the community, and we need to make sure we take good care of our city employees, we retain our city employees, and we reward them for the work they do. Having said that, I want to point out that the 2024 Council approved a user cost recovery policy that passes on 100% of the user cost recovery on to residents, and that is causing fee hikes that are upwards of 10% this year, coming on the back of fee hikes that occurred last year. And we cannot have these costs being transferred to residents. I'm asking you to roll back the user cost recovery policy so that we find other ways to be smart with our city budget. We need to cut expenses on consultants. Let's spend our money on resources that really pay off, and that is our city employees. not consultants. We need to make sure we take care of our employees, not consultants, and we need to cut the study projects. Our city employees can do a far better job with doing surveys and studies and proposals and pursuing grants and finding ways to fund projects than these consultants. I have seen a number of these consultant studies, and they're superficial at best and come nowhere close to the quality of work that our city employees do. I will give you the example of our finance department. They took it upon themselves last year to do the surveys, to do the community outreach on budget, and that was a world-class effort and was appreciated by the community. In contrast with the many consultant projects I have seen on Memorial Park, on Blackberry Farm Golf Course, on recycled water, on appliances, we can go on and on on these consultant projects that really do no service to our city, and we are throwing away money on consultants. So I'm asking you to put a moratorium on consultant projects. That is money that belongs to our city employees, and you need to take care of our city employees, and you need to do it without putting it on the back of residents. So I'm urging you to agendaize rolling back the cost recovery policy on residents and bringing back detailed study on budgets by department so that we can look at where the consultant spend is, where the study projects are, and we can be ruthless in cutting costs while taking care of our city employees. Thank you.
Thank you, San. Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item?
Yeah.
Your microphone, Mayor.
Yeah. Thank you all of the IFPT employees. Thank you for all of your service, and thank you for coming today in person, and we will take your comments seriously. And City Manager, could you comment about the Wilson Park issue, the baseball? That's very dangerous.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Zheng, for coming to the meeting tonight, and, you know, our, my team, my Public Works team, has been in touch with you. We hear your concerns, so we appreciate you reaching out to the city. So the field at Wilson Park was built to the required specifications for a little-league field, and in terms of additional mitigations, we just also installed signage on both of the baseball fields, indicating that the use of this field is by permit only, and no unauthorized access is allowed. We're hoping that these measures will help. Staff is also looking into whether it's feasible for city to go a step further at this time. However, it's not looking feasible because of the height that will be necessary for the netting. I will keep Council posted on our efforts and next steps on that.
Okay. Councilmember Frue has your hand up. Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To the City Manager, there was a contention made earlier about what the property tax loss would be from the conversion of McClellan Terrace earlier, and I wanted to confirm because the number did not sound accurate to me. Based upon my recollection of a previous conversation with you, that number should be between about $30,000 and $40,000 to the city of Cupertino annually. Is that accurate to your, about the best of your recollection?
That is my recollection, but I'm happy to double-check that, Councilmember.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comment? Okay. So then we will go to the consent calendar. I don't believe anyone has polled an item. Do I have any?
No, Mayor, we have not received any requests to remove any items for discussion.
Then we will go to public comment on consent calendar items.
Yes, Mayor, I have two requests to speak from Community Hall. I see no requests virtually. Charles Williams and Jean Bedord. Charles? Welcome.
Welcome. And thank you for listening to me. Mayor, Council members, and staff, my name is Charles Williams. My family and I have lived on Mercedes Road in Cupertino for about 40 years. I address my comments to Agenda Number Nine. I am interested in this because fire is very personal to me. My parents lost their home in the Camp Fire. My father-in-law lost his home in the Malibu Fire. Fire is very important in California, and it's going to be more important as time goes on. By amending Chapter 16-74, the Council will declare that a significant portion of Cupertino is in a very high fires severity zone. Okay, now what? What are we going to do about it? A very high fire severity zone indicates areas where, quote, wildfires are likely to start easily and spread rapidly, posing a significant threat to life and property. So that's what we're faced with. In words of, so in other words, it's not a question of will Cupertino experience a catastrophic fire, but it's simply a question of when. Such a fire may involve hundreds of properties, hundreds of millions of dollars of losses, and threaten hundreds of residents. I believe, on the good side, there is much we can do to make our community fire resilient, and we must begin now, and the city has to lead this effort. It's my understanding that relying on individual volunteer efforts are woefully inadequate. During wildfire, my life, my property is protected by my neighbor through their actions of being resilient, and my neighbor's property is protected by my actions of being resilient. In the volunteer efforts, current estimates are about 19% of the community actually participates. That means 80% of the people are not participating to try to keep their community resilient. The central questions like, is there sufficient water? What about equipment, okay, if there's a fire? Are the evacuation routes adequate? What modifications of landscaping and building practices are necessary? And more importantly, how are they made to happen? When people decide it's my property, I'll do whatever I want with it. These questions-
Thank you. That is your time.
Okay. I'm sorry. Okay.
Thank you. And next, we have Jean Bedord. And then we will, we will move to those members of the public requesting to speak virtually. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening, Council members and staff. My name is Jean Bedord, and I'm a longtime Cupertino resident. I am speaking tonight on two items on the consent calendar. Their first one is Number Six, which is the settlement with Pamela Wu. And I would like to share with you a comment from the community. I don't know how many of you still take the print Mercury News, but there was a very good letter to the editor today. The headline, "A New City Will Benefit From Wu's Contributions." Not Cupertino. As a long ti, and the person who wrote this said, "As a longtime resident of Cupertino, I want to thank Pamela Wu for her contribution as the city manager. Pamela kept the needs and interests of this city in her focus. She made some hard decisions that demonstrated those efforts, even in the face of some misguided adversity. She will be remembered as someone who did what was necessary to move the city forward in some challenging times and deserves all our thanks." The next city that brings her on will be adding a person who cares for their city and its residents. Signed, Steve Salgut, Cupertino. This is the feeling in the community. The second item is Number Nine, Number 11, the Apple Agreement. And I would like to commend Chad Mosley for his negotiating with Apples. He has maintained a long-term relationship with them. In fact, one of our city, former city planners happens to be over there, and I'm sure that that was part of the relationship there. It's important to maintain relationships, not destroy them, as happened with Eric. So I commend Chad. I hope we're able to hold on to him as the city moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. And now we will move to those members of the public requesting to speak virtually. We have San Ar and Peggy Griffin. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and City Council members. I wish to speak on the fire severity hazard maps that were just approved. I'm speaking on behalf of myself as a resident. I am in the same neighborhood as the gentleman that just spoke, Inspiration Heights. We and all of the communities west of Linda Vista Drive have been upgraded to the very high severity fire zone. And I brought this up in the last meeting when this was approved, that the real risk isn't from individual homeowners, but it is the lack of maintenance of the county properties, the unincorporated county properties to the west of us and to the south of us, and particularly the quarry, which is now not in a state of operation and not being maintained. And so I urge Council, as well as individual Council members, to partner with the county, with District Five, and with the quarry to make sure that periodic maintenance and fire management is being performed on the quarry property, particularly the parts of the quarry that, that line up to the west side of Inspiration Heights and Creston Neighborhoods, as well as Mata Vista South, the areas that are south and southwest of Mata Vista South. It is critical that these areas are managed and maintained so that we do not have fires starting in the abandoned quarry that then spreads east and into our Cupertino neighborhoods. I also want to urge you to consider a few more things. Specifically, there are precedents, such as in San Francisco, where zoning and municipal code is used to control of certain, certain features from being allowed in certain neighborhoods. So specifically, in San Francisco, RHS One and RHS Two zoning codes do not allow the density bonus program and the BMR units from being allowed in the RHS One and RHS Two. While that may be appearing as exclusionary in that context of RHS One and RHS Two, I would urge you to, in this context, apply the same kind of restrictions for the very high severity fire zones so that in the neighborhoods that are very high severity fire zone, we disallow BMR units and we disallow density bonus, and as a result, we're able to prevent these high-density projects from being approved in these neighborhoods. So please consider that item, and please continue working with the quarry and the county. Thank you.
Thank you, San. And Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this.
Okay. Thank you. On consent agenda item, I think the Council can still make short comments on them. So for the high fire severity zone, I believe the, once you are identified with the higher severity, there will be higher standard required by the county for brush and weed abatement. So we, the homes do need to abide by a higher standard. So, anything else to add, City Manager? Yeah.
Not on this item.
Yeah. Okay. And then for the Apple Agreement, I think the city first got the donation from Apple in 2019, and then I'm really thankful that the staff worked hard to collaborate with Apple so that we are receiving 2.4 million, I think, more donation from Apple for the I-218 interchange project. So we are thankful for the city staff for your hard work and for Apple for coming forward with another donation. Councilmember Wong.
Yeah, I wanted to take the time to thank staff on the interchange, as well as Apple. I think it's really important to be able to come together to do that. I also want to thank staff to making sure that no road dites occurred on that lane. In fact, it actually accommodates both cyclists as well as vehicles in terms of the flow. I think that's very important to the residents. And also really do want to thank Apple because making that move actually is a better use of some of those funds. So that's my only comment. Thank you.
Yeah. And then I'd like to direct the public to a presentation from the last council meeting by Fire Safe Council. They are a nonprofit that will, that are working with communities to make it more fire safe, so we are looking forward to see how we can collaborate more on that, those. Council, Vice Mayor Moore.
Thank you. I would like to make a comment and request an informational memo regarding the loss of retail, and the informational memo that I request respectfully would be how much, letting us know how much retail has been lost since 2018 due to SB 35, the Housing Accountability Act, density bonus law, and SB 330. If we could have a kind of a before and after impact, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
I've noted that, Vice Mayor. And Mayor, can I make a brief comment about Item 11 as well? So I just would like to say on my behalf and also my staff's behalf, we're very grateful for Apple stepping in to bridge the funding gap, which is injecting much-needed capital at a decisive moment for this project. I'd also like to call out Chad Mosley for his efforts here. The city will be able to advance a transportation infrastructure project that will deliver long-term regional benefits, so thank you to Apple. And as we all know, there is an existing contract in place, and Apple has, you know, funded other projects in Cupertino, so we're very grateful.
Okay. No other comment? Then we, do I, may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar items?
One moved.
One moved.
I will second it.
Mohan. So that's Item 4 to 11, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
So we can roll call.
Councilmember Frue.
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan.
Aye.
Councilmember Wong.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Aye.
Mayor Chow.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so we will go to Item 12, which is the public hearing on brush abatement program. Hearing to, so this is a program that's down annually, and I believe with a high fire severity zone, there will be a three-year grace period for those homes that now require a higher requirement for abatement. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and I believe Kirsten, our city clerk, will present this item.
Yes, Mayor, I have a brief presentation. And we also have Deputy Fire Chief Hector Estrada on hand for questions afterwards. So the brush abatement program is different than the weed abatement program, and this is to address wildfires that are increasingly becoming a threat to our community and that present a danger to people and properties. The Santa Clara County Fire Department has the authority to provide for life and safety and protection of property. The Cupertino municipal code requires homeowners to clear brush and maintain defensible space for this purpose. The, the wild and urban interface, or WUI, as it's nicknamed, is defined as the area where homes and structures are meet wild and vegetation. And this is primarily on the hillside and foothills in Cupertino. The Cupertino WUI area is designated high and moderate fire hazard areas, areas per the state WUI code. So the owner responsibilities are to provide a 30-to-100-foot zone around all structures, which creates a buffer between the home and surrounding vegetation to protect the structure from, from catching fire. And in order to abate their properties, homeowners have two options. The homeowner may complete the required work themselves, or the county may authorize a contractor to complete the work on behalf of the owner, and the cost would be added to the next property tax. to the next property tax bill. And I will say that the Fire Department does a fantastic job at working with homeowners on compliance during this, during the season. So the enforcement and inspection timeline this year began on February 14th, where letters were mailed to all property owners and sent on behalf of the Fire Department. In April 1, fire, county fire property inspections began. And then between May 13 and June 3, the re-inspections of any non-compliant properties were conducted. And then on June 3, the Fire Department also sent a notice to those non-compliant properties of tonight's hearing. So the recommended action this evening is to conduct a hearing to note objections from the property owners that are on the non-compliant list and adopt Resolution 25-048 ordering abatement of public nuisance and potential fire hazard. So the fire can continue conducting the abatement of properties. And that conducts, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions for Fire Chief Estrada, he is available.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have any question from the council members? If not, we'll go to, yeah.
I had a quick question, Mayor. Madam City Clerk, on one of your slides, you said there are two options. The homeowner can take care of the problem himself or herself. And there was a second option, which is complete the work.
The county will assign an approved, an authorized contractor to clear the brush on behalf of the property owner. And then those costs, whatever the fees for abatement, would be applied to the property owner's tax bill.
Okay. So that's what you meant when you said complete the work?
Yes. Yes. To clear, to clear the brush, yeah. And any hazardous materials.
Okay. And the homeowner will know this because there will be plenty of information or notices
They'll receive, yes, they receive regular noticing from the fire and the county. County, fire, and the city as well.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
I do have a question then. So if the county performs the work, would they notify? Because they will be performing the work on the property of the property owner. So they will notify the property owner before the contractor comes on site?
So, I'll let the Fire Chief respond to that.
I'll just support if you need. But I do have a response if you wish.
Yes. That would be great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for the question, Mayor. It's a great question. It's something that, this process is actually, there are two phases. The first, where we discover any kind of conditions that need to be mitigated. We go through the inspection cycle. We have three properties that are currently up for referral to the county. Right now, what we're doing is we're just indicating these properties. We also have a list of the number of times that we contacted them and the number of times that we visited those properties, the actual mitigations that were necessary. And at this point, none of them have made the necessary corrections. Typically, what we do is we will continue to work with the resident. As long as they're working with us and start making progress, we do not refer. So this is one of the things that I think is important for you to know. When it's in our hands and then we refer it over to you, at that point, there is no possibility for the resident to incur any kind of expense. And it goes through this process where, at the end of the week, we'll actually push that list of properties to the county. We will then release it to them through you, and then the county will pick it up. No action will actually happen in this calendar year because they go through the process of actually accepting it, putting it through, and they will return to you, indicating that these properties are now due for abatement. And if the conditions still exist, there'll be a number of opportunities for verification and then notice that says this work is about to be conducted. For them at that point, that's when they start actually incurring expense, and that would be probably February of next year. So there's definitely a timeframe for them to react. They still have the ability to make corrections without being charged, but it will go through that formal process. And without that, it's not actually legal to put anything on their property taxes. So there's definitely a lot of steps that have to take place. It's very procedural. And then we are essentially transferring it through your authority to the county.
So I do have some, anyone else have question? I do have some question. I think one of the public comment mentioned about the property of the quarry, which is privately owned property, likely in the county, not in the city. Then how do they, how does the county make sure those properties abide by the brush abatement?
Great question.
And then there is, maybe I'll just mention it all. I think another resident has mentioned the Pacific Railway property, that they are concerned about the brush that's not being cleaned up there, concerned about also the presence of coyote hiding in the brushes. Yeah. And then another thing, I think another resident brought up earlier was their home is close to county park, and that they are concerned county park property are not cleaned up, and they are concerned of any fire that might affect their property. So.
Okay. So you listed a few things. I'm going to try to make sure that I hit them all, Mayor. Thank you for the question. So common held, commonly held or public properties are handled differently. So overall, there's oversight of different properties. So county parks, for example, we'll talk to them directly. We talk to PG&E, MidPenn, some of the other open space, and we'll ask them to make sure that they have compliance. We also have projects for clearing vegetation, green belts, things like that that are actually part of the CWPP. So those efforts are actually underway and there are some, if we do get a notice, though, we go directly to code enforcement or through the county or whatever the appropriate jurisdiction. So there's always an opportunity for us to respond to an actual complaint, and we have done so.
If a resident is concerned about a specific county property, what action they can take? Where they can report?
They can contact us, or they can go through the county code enforcement. So we effectively do the same thing. We'd find the right, basically the right resource that has the authority to do the abatement in those areas and find out, first of all, if the condition, we'll verify the condition exists. We'll ask them if they actually have authority and we don't to verify the condition exists and then have some kind of action. We have probably received about six to 10 of those this year for open space, county properties and other. We also have projects like for the, for Lehigh. We do have authority when it comes to quantities of hazardous materials and other types of things. So we actually do have cause to enter the property, but we have to work with the county. I actually sent an email while we were sitting here to go back out and take another look, specifically for vegetation, so we can get on that for you. And then also the rails. The rails are tough. To try to effect change on one of the rails, we've actually been trying to work with them over the last couple of years. They're slow to respond, but we will continue to work with them. So I will just identify that that is a challenge, but it is a recognized weakness that we have. As a matter of fact, when we were driving roads for Cupertino for the WUI maps or the LRA maps, we noticed the railroad tracks along some areas. So those are known to us, and we are going to continue to try working with the railroads.
Okay. Thank you so much.
And I don't have anything on the coyotes. Sorry.
Okay. So let's go to public comment.
Mayor, I currently have no request to speak on this item.
Okay. So three properties are on the list and they are not contesting?
That is correct. I, we have not received any requests from those parcel owners tonight, nor have I received anything via email.
Okay. Then maybe if no more questions, we can adopt the recommended action. Would anyone like to make a motion? Council member Moore?
Sure. I move to accept the staff report and adopt the resolution ordering abatement of public nuisance, potential fire hazard pursuant to Cupertino Municipal Code Section 16.40.200 regarding defensible space that is brushed and Resolution Number 25-029, which is shown in Attachment A.
So do we need to note there is no objection as part of the motion?
You do not, Mayor, I'm sorry, I missed the mover on this. Was it, so council member Mohan moved this? Okay. Okay. You, you do not.
Second. First, no second.
So to clarify, we are not looking for anything additional in the motion.
Okay. So then let's do a roll call vote.
Council member Fruin?
Aye.
Council member Mohan?
Aye.
Council member Wong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Item number 14, oh, sorry, 13, post-collection services for, and destination facility for garbage and construction and demolition debris with attendant rate increases.
Thank you, Mayor. We have the Public Works team here to present this item, and I will turn it over to them now.
Thank you. Chad Mosley, Director of Public Works. Thank you, council. Tonight, we're here to present numerous agreements for post-collection services. Just to kind of give you a heads up, this effort has been over two years in the making. I'm pretty sure Ursula, who's next to me, has had a number of sleepless nights, but we are very happy with what we're bringing to you tonight, and Ursula will take it away. Thank you.
Great. Good evening, Mayor Chow, council members. I am Ursula, Environmental Programs and Sustainability Manager for the city. With us via Zoom is Peter Dibler from HFNH, our consultant on this project, and we do have representatives from Zanker International Disposal, City of Sunnyvale, and Recology here in the audience. My presentation will take about 12 minutes. Tonight, we are talking about where our garbage and construction and demolition, CND, debris are going after they get collected. The cost of these services is included as part of the rates that residents and businesses pay via their recology bills. Because they are agreements established between the city and the service providers, this is not something that recology has control over. They are just passing through these costs as part of the larger suite of services included in collecting and transporting the waste. So just to be clear, any additional costs as a result of new agreements will be in addition to recology's regular annual rate adjustments. It is worth noting that recology does offer about a 50% discount on garbage bills to eligible low-income residents, and there is no impact to the general fund from these agreements. So we'll just do a quick review of how things work right now because it can get a bit confusing. We currently have two agreements to manage waste. One is the collection of materials, which residents and businesses see every week with recology trucks driving around to service the carts, bins, compacters, and debris boxes. The second agreement is for disposal of the city's garbage and for processing and disposal of construction and demolition debris at Newby Island Landfill, which is operated by International Disposal Corp. Recology collects all the carts and bins, and they also, through sub-agreements, arrange for handling of the green and blue cart materials. Nothing is going to change with the blue and green carts and bins. They are not affected by the new agreements we will be discussing. So what before, what is before us today is the material in the gray carts and bins and debris boxes. And as noted, currently, the garbage is collected by recology and then taken to Newby Island near Milpitas for direct disposal. Recology also takes construction demolition debris to Newby Island where it is sorted for recovery of usable materials, and then anything left over is disposed into the landfill. This agreement ends in November of this year, so we need a new one. Council last considered this item in May of 2023. Staff presented the possibility of sending garbage for processing with the understanding that it would increase residential rates by an estimated $5 to $8 per month. Council directed staff to conduct an RFP and bring back all options for CND debris handling, landfilling, and processing of garbage. So now we'll walk through the options we've negotiated to go forward. Again, just talking about the garbage. So we had these three services we wanted proposals for. CND debris processing, landfilling, and garbage processing. Ultimately, though, we conducted an RFP for landfill services and CND debris processing only. We removed the garbage processing from the RFP process because we learned at that time that only the SMART station had permitted capacity in this geographic area to allow, to allow accepting new tons, and because our municipal code allows the city to forego the competitive process if the provider is another public agency. For transparency, we explained that parallel process in the RFP, indicating that city council would be choosing the desired services. For the landfill and CND RFP, the city received two proposals for each service. Zanker, which is part of Green Waste, won for processing of CND materials. Their facility receives construction and demolition debris in multiple categories, which are sorted to recover materials for recycling. The rate of diversion for each of their sorting lines and the overall facility are third-party certified. Because construction projects are required by Cal Green to divert 65% of their project debris, having this better diversion helps a great deal. This facility is in San Jose, near El Vizcun, Milpitas. This change will result in an increase in the cost of debris boxes by roughly 7% to 10%, depending on the type of material and the weight. For example, a debris box full of mixy and debris that costs around 700 right now would be 747. The winning proposal for landfilling of regular residential and commercial garbage was International Disposal operating Newby Island. This is where Cupertino currently sends its garbage. The change in cost for an average residential ratepayer will be about $0.06 per month extra. Staff negotiated a 10-year agreement, which is as much capacity as the facility can currently guarantee, and it includes an exit clause should the council decide to direct garbage to be processed. The third service was the garbage processing. And as described earlier, we began negotiations with the City of Sunnyvale in parallel to the RFP process. Processing the garbage there would rescue about half of the material from going to landfill and instead send it for composting or recycling, and would cost the average residential ratepayer an extra $0.06 per month. That said, the SMART station will be undergoing a major renovation that will take it out of operation soon after our current landfill agreement runs out. For that reason, we are recommending that if council does decide to route garbage for processing, that would begin after the SMART station has completed its upgrades. If the project stays on track, that should bring us right about to the beginning of our garbage rate period seven at the beginning of 2027. For those who may be unfamiliar with this whole processing the garbage thing, here's a bit about that. It involves sending garbage to a facility that uses machinery and human sorters to pull recyclable and compostable materials out of the garbage, reducing the amount that goes to landfill. This process essentially rescues those materials that were erroneously thrown away. Routing garbage for processing would accomplish Action W.1.2 in the city's adopted climate action plan, CAP 2.0. And processing garbage is also recommended by the Sustainability Commission, supported by Items 1 and 12 in the city's zero-waste policy, and by Policy INF 7.1 in the city's general plan. If Cupertino decided to send garbage to be processed, it would not remove or replace the green carts and bins. People are still encouraged to properly sort their materials. When considering processing, it's helpful to know what is in Cupertino's garbage. This data is from the Detailed Waste Characterization Study done in 2024 of Cupertino's garbage. Most notable are the green portions, which show that about half, 46% of the garbage by weight, is organics, meaning food, food-soiled paper, or other compostable materials. The blue portions are other recyclable materials, and the orange are items that could be diverted through specialty takeback or drop-off recycling programs such as electronic through specialty take-back or drop-off recycling programs such as electronics, batteries, textiles, medicines. Altogether, you can see that over 60% of what we throw away could have been diverted. The organics found in our garbage is calculated to have a greenhouse gas emissions factor of about 4,000 metric tons of CO2 equivalent per year. And here you can see how the amount of garbage generated by sector, comparing single-family homes, multifamily homes, and commercial generators. The municipal amount includes garbage collected from all city facilities. Should council wish to pursue the service of sending garbage to be processed, Sunnyvale offers two options for use of the SMART station: becoming a partner or using the facility strictly as a merchant. Partnership offers a slightly lower per-ton rate and access to the extra drop-off services available at the SMART station. Partners share in all costs, including the debt service on the bonds that Sunnyvale is using to fund their big upgrade, and they share in revenues. This means that there could be unexpected costs beyond what are budgeted for. There could also be unexpected benefits, such as higher revenues from rescued recyclables or the addition of new partners to share in fixed costs. And what are the extra services that residents of partner cities are allowed? They include drop off a wide variety of materials, such as e-waste, motor oil, seven days a week at no additional cost, including mattresses, access to the reused trailer where usable items are stored and people can take them, pickup of compost and mulch, document shredding events, free dump days, and pay-to-throw by material type. Cupertino residents do already have access to most of those services already through recology or third-party take-back programs, they're just not available seven days a week. The merchant agreement, on the other hand, has a slightly higher per-ton rate, but there is no risk of unforeseen costs. The merchant agreement does not allow access to the SMART station's ancillary services and does not allow participation in oversight or planning. So here is how the three options compare in terms of impact to the average residential customer. Even if adding in processing, Cupertino's garbage rates would be close to average compared to surrounding jurisdictions, as shown in the pink and green rows here. Cities marked with an asterisk also currently process their garbage. So why do we recommend the merchant agreement? The partner agreement option has that slightly lower rate impact to residents, additional services, the potential to realize gain from the sale of recyclables, and participation in the operation of the station. However, it also brings the possibility of expenses that go beyond what is captured in the per-ton tip fees and obligation to be part of the debt service on the bonds that Sunnyvale will use to fund the upgrade. Staff is unable at this time to fully outline the scope of those financial risks and obligations. Part of that uncertainty is that Sunnyvale is currently in the process of issuing the bonds, so there are logistical pieces that remain uncertain until that process is complete. For those reasons, and due to the consistency of the merchant agreement rates, staff recommends executing a merchant agreement now while retaining the option to explore partnership in the future. Cupertino would not send garbage to the SMART station or start paying them until their upgrade is complete, currently estimated, as we said at the beginning of 2027. To recap where this gets us, staff recommends approving the Zanker agreement for C and D debris and to approve the IDC agreement for continued use of Newby Island landfill for our garbage. Both of those agreements will go into effect November 21, 2025, but the residents and businesses will not see the rate change reflected in their garbage rates until February 1. Approving those two agreements is critical to allow required advanced notification to recology and to make sure the city has places to take its material. Staff also recommends execution of the merchant agreement with the City of Sunnyvale for use of the SMART station for processing garbage after they complete their upgrade, meaning residents and businesses would not see that rate impact from the processing for at least another 18 months. As noted in the staff report and as touched on in the previous slide, the end of our current landfill agreement and the timing of the next regular rate adjustment for recology do not align. This means that we have about a 10-week interim period to address. Rather than changing rates in November and then again in February, we recommend using funds from the Resource Recovery Fund 520 to cover the difference, which is not expected to exceed $35,000. So the recommended actions are to authorize the city manager to execute three agreements, one with Zanker, one with International Disposal, and one with City of Sunnyvale, and to approve the budget modification to cover the difference in rates for the interim period between November and February. That concludes my slides, and I'm happy to answer any questions you or the public may have.
Okay, thank you for the presentation, very well organized. So any question from councilmembers? Councilmember Mohan? And then Councilmember Wong?
Thank you, Ursula, that was a great presentation. I did attend the prep session, and that was extremely useful as well. One question, in your last slide, you said we have to enter into the agreement, the merchant agreement now, and I was wondering what is the reason for the urgency now, since they will, their upgrade will not be completed till 2027?
Yeah, there's not actually that much urgency for the SMART option. There is urgency on the landfill and the C and D options, just to make sure we're ready for November, but as you point out, there's not, I don't know if you had something you wanted to say, you unmuted over there.
I am unmuted, yes. There is no urgency at this point in time. By executing these agreements now, it does set expectations for our residents that, you know, they'll see that increase in about 18 months or so. And additionally, it makes sure, it ensures that we are able to be served by the SMART station, they do have limited capacity, they do have additional capacity for other, for other potential partner agencies, but that could potentially get filled up, especially since their diversion rates are going to be increased, and that's going to be a notable improvement for a lot of folks. So this is, part of it is trying to get in while we can.
Okay, so they will take a limited number of participants in this agreement, is that what you're saying?
I wouldn't say limited number of participants, they just have a limited capacity that they can process. They still have plenty of capacity, but it would be good to make sure that we are one of the cities that can be served by that capacity.
Okay, and one more question. So the agreements end in November, and the first rate hikes you said will be early part of next year?
Correct.
And that would just be the $0.06 for the residential and about $45 for the construction and debris?
Right, the C and D would depend on what type of material and how big your debris box and how much it weighs and all that, but we are looking at a 7% to 10% increase.
And for the residential, it would be $0.6?
Just the $0.6, yeah, in the short term, yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Wong?
And for clarity, just really quick, if I could clarify that, it's $0.6 for the landfill, there may be rate increases for the collection from recology, so that is yet to be determined, we don't know those numbers yet. So it's not like you're going to see just a $0.6 increase in next February, there's going to be the $0.6 plus whatever the recology rate increase is. Sorry, I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Right, recology has their own operating expenses and their own agreement and their own adjustment that happens annually, and so these agreements are separate from that.
Councilmember Wong, your hand is down, do you still have a question?
I do, I do, thank you. Thanks to staff for your presentation. I do have a question, is there anything forcing us to do the processing versus the landfill at the moment?
No, nothing forcing us.
Okay, and you mentioned that recology may add their own charges, what typically would the increases be from recology for their operation of it?
They have an index-based adjustment based on multiple indices, and then they have a cap on their operational costs, so there are some boundaries around that.
Okay, and if we go with the processing option, we are basically telling our residents that we're going to tack on $6 more, $72 a year extra, so that we can process versus landfill on a 10-year agreement, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, no more questions.
And for clarity, the agreements with Sunnyvale are actually 20 years.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, thank you for the presentation and for the very extensive staff report. Looking at the comparison between Cupertino and, say, San Jose, so what we're doing right now with regards to the gray bin in Cupertino versus that same gray bin in San Jose, what's the difference between our processing?
So San Jose has post-collection processing, they actually do things a little bit different there, they, like here in Cupertino, we want you to put your food scraps in the green bin. In San Jose, they actually want you to put your food scraps in with the garbage, because then they process it out again. And then they have the yard waste in the, in the street arrangement, or whatever they do there, they have a different arrangement. So they go about things a bit differently, but then they do process the garbage.
Okay, so they divert all of the recyclables and the food waste that's in their green bin, their gray bin in San Jose?
Yeah, I mean, probably not 100% of everything that errone, you know, that's, not every food scrap, right, is going to get pulled out, but yeah.
As much as they can, okay, so, but in Cupertino, in contrast, so when we're looking at the table of the costs per month, for Cupertino, by contrast, so we've got like 58,000 residents versus the almost million residents in San Jose, which have that post-diversion. If we put food scraps, and it looks like over 60% of what we're putting in our gray bin is, could be diverted, if we put our food scraps in there, which it looks like many people are, and we put recyclables in that gray bin as well, which many people are, it goes to the landfill, and none of that, those recyclables get diverted and turned into something useful?
Correct.
And, and your food scraps get turned into methane and other greenhouse gases in the landfill?
Correct, yeah.
That's the difference.
No passing go directly to the landfill, yeah.
Okay, and, and about what percentage of the residents are failing to separate out their recyclables and food waste?
I don't know that we have that metric exactly, I mean, we have the overall how we're doing, and we have self-disclosed from a survey that 55% of people do try to put their food scraps in their green cart. So if you can go by that, there are 45 who, 45% who are not.
Okay, so what, what was the chart that showed, like, the 60 and the 65% comparison? What was that looking at? Was like multifamily, commercial, single-family, was that the difference between those?
Of what we're putting in the garbage?
Yes.
Yeah, that showed, oops, there we go, that showed everything, so when they did the waste characterization, they just pulled everything out of the garbage and sorted it to see what was ending up in there. So 46% of it was green compostable, you know, another 17% was recyclable, and 28% was non-recoverable, which is really just what should be in the garbage.
Okay, and, and so despite education and outreach and getting that, the map that shows what goes in which bin, still for single-family garbage, 60% is recoverable, that, that is not getting recovered right now?
Correct.
Okay, and then for multifamily, 68% and commercial, 65%?
Yeah, we really can't point to anyone being a star in this.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, in fairness, it is very confusing, some of the packaging out there, but yeah.
So I, so in the chart that you have with multiple cities, those with stars have the post-collection service, are they all, how many of them use the SMART station in Sunnyvale?
Sunnyvale and Mountain View are the current users of the SMART station.
Oh, so there are no other city that use as a consumer, the model that we are going to have?
We would be the first merchant.
Oh, we will be the first merchant, okay, so the other cities, what are they using as post-collection service, post-sorting service?
That I don't have handy, I know a number of them are using green waste.
So there's Santa Clara, San Jose, Palo Alto.
I think those are all using green waste.
Green waste, so you did compare between green waste and then the Sunnyvale SMART station?
When we embarked on this, they didn't actually have permitted capacity to take on any more tons at that time.
Oh, okay, so we don't have a comparison in terms of cost at this point?
We have heard of some cost, and actually SMART is very competitive with those costs.
Okay, so I did visit Sunnyvale SMART station, it's a tremendous operation, they have automated sorting, but then it also takes a lot of human sorting power, so with sorting, 50% of the garbage would be recovered to become recycle and others. So does that mean we will have less that actually goes to the landfill?
Correct.
Then our contract with the landfill, would that cost be reduced if we have less going to the actual landfill?
If we start sending to SMART, we would exit the agreement with the landfill that we use currently, go over to SMART, and then SMART has a separate agreement with a different landfill to handle anything that doesn't get pulled out, that they can't rescue.
Oh, so we won't have, continue our current landfill, and whatever they couldn't recover, it will be sent to their landfill?
Correct.
Okay, um, okay. And I, I think with all the best effort of sorting, even the stuff that I put in the blue bin, I am always not certain if I'm, they are all recoverable, so those are not being sorted?
The blue bin does get sorted, the green cart gets sorted, the blue cart gets sorted by green waste, actually, through the sub-agreement that they have with recology.
So the current blue bin content does get sorted?
Yes.
Okay, great, okay, any other question from anyone? Councilmember Mohan?
Yeah, one last question, Ursula. The additional $6.25 per month which you, which you think will be incurred by a household which has a gray bin, is there some flexibility there for, say, low-income residents?
Recology continues to offer their low-income discount, so if people meet a certain eligibility, then recology can extend to them a significant discount.
But this is an agreement that we would have with the SMART station, right?
But if you remember, everything gets channeled through the recology rates, and recology extends that, that reduced rate to low-income folks.
Okay, so our main contact then is recology?
For billing?
So all our billings are processed through recology, regardless of whether we have a SMART station or not?
Correct, yeah, to the residents, it's, it's going to look the same, they're going to get the same bill, it's just we have these side agreements that are...
And you're saying there's some flexibility for low-income folks?
Yes.
50% discount from recology, right?
Yes, it's a good discount, discount if you're eligible.
And that would extend to the SMART station use as well?
It's applied to the recology bills, including this disposal aspect.
Okay, thank you.
So one more question, so regarding the organic, for us right now, it goes to the brown bin, the landfill, and I think for Sunnyvale, they have a separate compartment in their garbage for organics, and in the SMART station, so you are actually able to put organic waste in a plastic bag, and in the SMART station, they have a way to break that press leak plastic and still collect organic, so we would not be able to offer that for Cupertino.
Right, that's a separate service that we haven't contemplated, it would mean a split cart, training everyone to separate out their food scraps.
That require a split cart, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It would be a whole thing.
Yeah, I know some people don't like this split cart. Okay, any councilmember one?
Yeah, just to declare, so basically, just so everybody understands what's going on, we still get a bill from Recology. It's just a question of then where the trucks take this to. Does it go to the landfill or does it go to a processing facility? Is that correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay, and what we're doing by going to the processing facilities, we're forcing our residents to pay $6 to $6 plus a little bit more so that it gets processed at a cost of $72 or more. And that still doesn't include any other Recology fees that may be added along the way. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so regardless of whether we choose processing or landfill, Recology will still increase the fees at some point in time for their part of the distribution. And the landfill also, whatever landfill or processing arrangement we choose, will then charge their piece, just so everybody understands what's going on. Is that correct?
Correct. I mean, everyone adjusts annually.
They'll adjust, they'll adjust accordingly, right? But right now, if we choose the processing, it's $6 more, and we're forcing that on our residents at that point in time. If we go down that route, they don't have a choice as to whether it goes to processing or landfill. We're mandating that choice as a city council. Is that correct?
It would be all, yeah, everybody would.
You can't do partial or opt-in or opt-out. It's everybody.
It's not choose your own adventure, no.
Not choose your adventures. Okay, thank you very much.
But we do get to reduce the amount of stuff that goes to landfill by 50%.
Correct, and we brought this because it's indicated in the Climate Action Plan and and the general plan and the zero-waste policy, so.
Yeah.
It's in alignment with earlier indicators.
So how about the school district and their waste? They are not included in the program, right?
They have their own agreement with Recology, so that would be a separate discussion.
So they may or may not have the post-collection or?
Well, it's an interesting question because they do collect sometimes on shared routes. So we'd want to chat with Recology on how that would look. But we don't pay for their cost of their waste disposal. So even when there's a shared route, they separate it out in terms of cost to us.
Okay, any more questions? Then we go to the public comment?
Yes, Mayor, I currently have three requests to speak virtually. Sam R., Peggy Griffin, and Lisa Warren. Welcome, Sam.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and councilmembers. I want to thank councilmember Wong for his candor and to be the voice on council dice that residents can truly trust, because his instincts speak on behalf of residents. And I'm disappointed with the conversation from the rest of the dice in not first thinking about the price hike on residents. In the last month, Tiburon was in the headlines for its waste separation program, where a vendor that is supposed to separate the waste just mixed it all together and was caught on video. Now, while they claim that it's an isolated incident, who is to verify that this vendor is actually doing the separation as required? And why should residents bear this cost? Over and over again, we're seeing that council does not hesitate to pass on fee hikes to residents. You've just been reminded of that, of the user cost recovery policy, and here we are seeing another attempt to increase fees. When this was deliberated in 2023, when it came up to get direction to proceed with the RFP, I spoke against it at that time. At that time, we had a council majority that was not putting residents first. While here, we now have a council majority that supposedly puts residents first. And let's see if you will actually do that. And for those that vote for this fee hike, let me remind you that in 18 months when this fee hike goes in, is when we have our next election, and that will be a timely conversation with residents on who voted to add to their fee hikes on top of other fee hikes that have already been approved and whose votes we have on track. So I urge council to reject this item, at least the ones that claim to be resident-aligned. Please think about stopping the nickeling and diming on residents' backs. We do not want to see these fee hikes. We are overtaxed and overburdened as this. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Next, we have Peggy Griffin, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, councilmembers and staff. I feel very similar to Sam R., not completely, but these tax hikes, nickel and diming, they add up. And every year, you're faced with more and more tax. I would encourage you to delay the merchant agreement, revisit it when they've upgraded. And I also would ask you to educate us. We do our best to put our trash in the right bin. We try to compost. We've reduced our bags of trash to one bag per week, which is significant because we started compost, putting the scraps in. But we don't know if we're right. Can we ask for an audit? Can we find out what we're doing wrong? Spend a little bit of money to help us educate ourselves, and then we can save all this $6 a month. This is too much. Please delay. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. So I have a bit of a different take here. Um, I hear, so we also have a half a bag or a bag, and it's not even a large bag of actual garbage every week. It sits there in this poor pitiful lump at the bottom of the gray bin. So we're doing good. And I, I don't know if resent is the right word, but when I walk in the neighborhood on garbage day and I can see what people are throwing in their bins, I want to scream. It's so obvious. They don't care. And should I have to pay more because I do it right and maybe they're not even going to recover anything? I'm probably like 6% if that, not 60% screwed up. And I, it's not that hard to do, but you have to care and you have to see the value in it. And am I willing to pay more so that the people that don't care or don't understand what whatever it is can have what they do or don't do done better? I think I am. I won't be happy about it, but it's our environment we're talking about. It goes way beyond, way beyond this, what we're talking about. So every little bit that we can do helps. But I do have the same concern that sure, we get charged more, but is the service actually being done? Or we just getting ripped off because that happens so often? Okay, you're going to pay more because you're going to do this, and they don't really do it. And that would infuriate me, but how do you prove that? So I don't know that you can prove it, but it would be nice to look into. And I babbled and I think I got all my points across. It's, I mean, I hear what the other speakers are saying and I, but I, I'm not, I guess I'm not willing to let our environment and our future go to pot faster because people are not, you know, 60% or more people don't give a shit, excuse my language. And for that, I would pay $6 more. You know, and maybe those people would pay $6 more. They'd get one less Starbucks cup and plastic lid that they throw away in the wrong place. You know, I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item?
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, so for the people, it feels like for the people who are putting in the effort to sort, and they feel like they are reducing their waste that goes into the garbage, but they would be paying penalized for the other 60% who didn't do it right, and we are charging everyone that $5 or $6 more a month. So is there any option for people to, who do it right, to adopt to going, maybe go into a program where they can pay less a month and ensure that they, if they do a better program?
We don't have a model like that before you tonight. There are always those who will do a good job and always a good set of folks that just want.
Councilmember Wong has a question. So does someone have an option of not having a gray bin? Then can they pay less?
Here's my question, and I believe this is true, but I want to validate here. Even though we choose the landfill option, and even if you don't sort your bins, is it true that the Newby Island landfill recovers its materials anyways through their own recycling? Like they actually do their own processing as well? Because from what I've read and what I've seen on their website, even if you don't sort, it all goes single stream, and they also do recovery at the landfill. So it's not that we just don't do recovery ahead of time. They do it after you drop it at the landfill. Is that correct?
There's no processing or recovery happening at the landfill for our gray bin materials. They're just going to the working landfill face and getting deposited.
So they're not processing any organic waste at all for the portion that we're putting on the gray bins?
Not for our gray bin materials. They do have separate arrangements for separately sorted. I mean, it's, but our gray bin materials go directly to the working face and are deposited without any processing or sorting.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, so I have been to the Newby Island landfill a couple of times in the in the past year, and you can see that they're not sorting there. And there's a large methane gas collection system that they've had to install. These landfills with the gases underground, you can end up with like minor explosions inside from time to time. For the individuals curious about the SMART station process, I believe four of the current council members have toured the SMART station facility, but there are a couple of YouTube videos which show the sorting process and how they bail up all the, all the cans and and then they sell those, how they bundle up all of the cardboard for recycling as well. And they are doing hand sorting, and they were had some robotic arms with optical sorting, which they were testing out. And so I'm really glad that they're going to be upgrading their machinery. If you look at like the Las Vegas landfill, that's there are some videos on that one, which are pretty interesting to see. And also going back to Sunnyvale, the SMART station with the food waste, they currently are pelletizing it for animal feed, and they will be moving to have that, the food waste, become an energy source for the wastewater treatment plant, which is next door, which is pretty exciting. So there there, we've researched it, we've been there, and and I hope if you haven't had a chance to watch the video, that you take a moment to to see what they're doing. It's it's really pretty incredible. So my late father had been a PhD environmental scientist, and back in the the 80s, he did research, early research on resource recovery of trash. And this was down in Florida when they started to require like about 30% diversion. And they were trying to figure out what they're going to do with this with this waste. What are you going to recycle it into? What can you, what can you do with it? So I'm excited that the process has moved along as much as it has. And I have family that lives in San Jose. They pay more, but they have that diversion. And unfortunately, there are people who aren't going to go to the extra effort and the steps to separate. It's just, that's how it is. So I really appreciate the all the information that's been provided for us, and I hope that members of the public do some more research as well.
Yeah, I, yeah, I realize there is increase in cost, but then we have to be responsible for things that we produce. And as a society, we have produced, we make it much easier to buy a lot of things, a lot of packaging, a lot of this material. And we are, a few dollars a month is very minimal to do that, to be responsible. Because if we don't start small on the landfill, there will be one day, there is no place you can do landfill. So I, yeah, I, the cost will be harder, will be some addition for some people, but I think it's really some something responsible. I think we all need to put in the effort. So councilmember fruit, and then councilmember Wong.
I want to thank Lisa Warren for her comments because they're a pretty accurate and vivid reflection of a lot of my feelings on this subject, especially the the sense of walking past a whole bunch of garbage bins and seeing how other people have sorted their trash. You know, at the the end of the day, we, in addition to trying to serve residents by keeping costs down, we try to make sure that we reflect what their desires are broadly. And the Climate Action Plan, and subsequently the Climate Action Plan 2.0 are part of trying to serve residents to reflect their values. As we're broadly popular policies, trying to move to this, this model is part of putting that plan into action. And I will just underscore that ultimately, when you look at what the figures are going to be, we land somewhere in the middle. We wind up being fairly average on cost. So I think that if the the rest of our neighbors are headed in this direction, we want to be able to get in on trying to do our part, too. So to me, I think that that is the balance to be made in this particular case. Thank you.
Councilmember Wong?
I just really want to put some perspective on this. I understand the environmental leanings of our fellow council members. I sort, I have one bag in the gray bin. Everything else is, you know, put into the other bins. You know, my father was also a pioneer in waste-to-energy systems and fluidized bed technology, allowing for that kind of recovery. But the bottom line is, we have an estimated 8,500 residents. That's 15% of residents over 65. Many of these have fixed incomes. We're forcing them to pay $72 more. It might sound like a lot of money for many of my fellow councilmen, members here, but it is a lot of money if you're on a fixed income, and it's not expected. And like the ban on gas stoves and forced electrifications, there should be choices. People make their choices. Don't force them to make the same choices and same values you have. They can be educated, they can learn, but don't force them. This is really about, you know, your ability to make a choice, your ability to have that freedom. I can't vote for this, as we should be driving down our costs over time, not increasing them. Our residents should have a choice to opt-in and not be forced into subsidizing this $23.7 million facility that Sunnyvale and Palo Alto built. We're subsidizing your aspiration by going in this direction, and it's not by choice. We're actually forcing our residents to do that. We should also be looking to figure out how we can drive down our PGN utility and water costs and wastewater costs where we can. As public servants, that's the least we can do is to drive down the cost structures. And so I would opt for the regular landfill option if that's put up there, but I will not be voting for any of the recovery options.
Thank you. So I have a question. So for the residents who do produce only one bag of garbage a week, is there an option to opt for a smaller gray bin and with a reduced cost? Could we consider that option in the future, maybe?
As part of the.
Because the gray bin is quite big.
Right, as part of the last franchise agreement, we did introduce the a smaller bin. So the 32 gallon is the most common amongst all residents, but there is a smaller one that's 24 gallons, I believe, and that does have a slightly higher, lower cost. But it's important to remember that the, it's the most expense is incurred to get the truck in front of your house. But it's important to remember that the, it's the most expensive incurred to get the truck in front of your house. Right, that's, so the, the amount that you generate isn't really the price driver.
That's still encourage less garbage produced. Twenty-four gallon is still kind of large, you know?
Right. They've also found that you can only squeeze down that garbage bin so far before people try to take that to save money and then just overflow into the other carts.
How much the price difference is if one goes to the smallest bin?
I don't have it right in front of me. It's not a huge difference. It's a...
Can someone, I guess it probably, if someone says, I want to do a bi-weekly collection...
It's in our MUNI code to collect garbage. Petrasible, petrasible garbage has to be picked up weekly per MUNI code.
Okay, so is it possible that we consider even smaller bin, sixteen gallon versus twenty-four gallon in the future?
I mean, we can talk to Recology. Like I said, I don't know how much that's gonna save because still, it's the most cost to get the trucks running around, right, to pick everything up.
But then for the families who do produce less garbage or an unlimited income, that's an option they can choose?
Mayor, I believe the twenty-four gallon cart is thirty-one dollars and forty-five cents, and the thirty-two gallon is thirty-three dollars and forty-five cents. It's only a two-dollar difference.
Two-dollar difference, yeah.
Oh, Chad has the rates up.
I think you're looking at the twenty-twenty-one rates, Ray. The twenty-twenty-five rates are forty-one, sixty-five for a twenty-four gallon, and thirty-two gallon is forty-four, thirty, so it's a little less than three dollars difference, yeah. About the same as we saw.
Okay, so if we would like to, so the difference is determined by our agreement with Recology?
Correct.
So we could negotiate a different, difference in that?
That would be out of scope of tonight's item?
From the future, yeah. Okay, Vice Mayor.
I was wondering about the, the discount for low-income residents? If you could mention a little bit more about that and where individuals can apply for that?
Yeah, broadly, it aligns with the PG&E care and FARA rates. If you're already a participant in that, then that would make you eligible for the Recology discount. And you just need to call the Recology customer service folks, and they can help.
Do you have some idea of what the discount would be?
It's roughly fifty percent.
Fifty percent, okay.
That's a good one.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm just wondering for the people who really, if we are increasing five dollars a month for the post-collection, is it possible people can use a smaller bin to then make up the difference?
I think about, I wanna say over ninety percent of the residents have that thirty-two gallon. So if they wanna explore the, the twenty-four, they could, that's available today.
So ninety-five percent use the thirty-six gallon, so they can...
Don't quote me on that. I know it's very high, though. It's definitely the majority.
So they can save three dollars to choose a smaller bin?
Correct. Today, they could call.
Okay, thank you. That's good to know. So Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So I did just pull up the rate schedule. So for low-income, twenty-four gallon, twenty dollars and thirteen cents right now versus forty-one, sixty-five for the single-family rate. So you're right, fifty percent discount there, which is great. And I would like to move the recommended action.
Yeah.
Okay. That, one, we adopt Resolution twenty-five dash oh four nine. I'm just gonna summarize it, and, which includes the agreement with the Zanker Road Resource Management for Solid Waste Construction and Demolition Material Processing, and B, the agreement with International Disposal Corporation of California for disposal of garbage at Newby Island Sanitary Landfill, and C, a merchant agreement with the City of Sunnyvale for the SMART Station, and two, adopt Resolution twenty-five dash oh five oh, approving budget modification two-five-two-six dash three-nine-five. And can I say et cetera? How'd that go? All right, thank you. I hope I have a second.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, second. And let's do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Fu?
Aye.
Councilmember Mohan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
No.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Chow?
Aye.
The motion carries with Wong voting no.
Okay, it's nine oh three. Should we take a break? We'll come back at five-minute break, so nine-ten, the seven-minute break, yeah.